Good evening. Welcome to the first day of summer Troy City Council meeting, June 21st. We're pleased this evening to have with us Pastor Vince Messina of the Woodside Bible Church, who will give us our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise Pastor.
Thank you Mayor. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the measure of health that is ours by your grace. And we thank you for our mayor and each council member. And Father, for the business that they transact this evening. May they have your wisdom and knowledge, Father, as they protect and provide for the city of Troy and the people of the city. Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, even this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Good to see you again. May we have a roll call Mrs. Rothamia?
Mayor Shelly?
Here.
Councilwoman Val Giamini?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howellak?
Here.
Hurwen?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. This evening, we begin our meeting in a special way, and that is our proclamation to honor Peter Hollinger as the 2010 firefighter of the year. So on behalf of City Council, I'll go down to the front to make that presentation.
Oh, you said it right?
This is a lot easier than fighting fires. Well, one of the things about being on council and being mayor, every now and then, we get to do some special things to go with all the work. So this is one of those occasions. This is a well-deserved honor for you. Proclamation to honor Peter Hollinger, the 2010 firefighter of the year. Whereas Peter Hollinger has been a volunteer firefighter since joining Troy's Fire Station Six sixteen years ago on September 23rd, 1993. And whereas his selection as firefighter of the year is due to his many years of dedication to the Troy Fire Department, having served with honor and dignity in all his roles at the station. Firefighter, Lieutenant, and Captain of Station Six. And whereas throughout his career, Pete has worked to better the Troy Fire Department through training, fire grounds tactics, and instruction. He's always willing to work with members of Station Six, as well as the other five fire stations, to improve skills, instruct the proper use of new equipment, and instill teamwork. Whereas Pete has been instrumental in orchestrating live burns for the station's training by taking the lead in securing houses or businesses, moving in burnable materials, checking the buildings for hazards, instructing the personnel on a walkthrough of all exits and hazards, and being responsible for the fire crew's safety while they work inside these structures. And whereas over the years, Pete has been honored with a number of awards, including Station Member of the Year Award for Fire Station Six, Safe Driving Award, Merit Service Award, Life Saving Award, and Letters of Commendation. He represents Station Six on the Firefighters Incentive Committee and has been a proctor for firefighters to exams. And whereas Pete is a committed and knowledgeable volunteer fire officer, he's also employed as a fire staff technician, assigned to the Fire Operations Division. And in this role, he was instrumental in the application and administration of a federal grant received by the department for replacement of personal protective equipment. And whereas through Lieutenant Hollinger's leadership, commitment, hard work, and countless hours of service, the Troy Fire Department has become even more efficient in the delivery of quality fire protection to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere congratulations to Lieutenant Pete Hollinger on the occasion of being chosen 2010 firefighter of the year by the Troy Fire Department. And be it further resolved, the City Council commends Pete for his achievement, leadership, and dedicated service to the citizens of Troy. And this is presented this 21st day of June 2010, signed by myself, all members of council, with great appreciation. Now I know you're happy. And now we have some special people to introduce here tonight. Would you like to?
I'd just like to introduce my wife, my two daughters Alexandra and Addison, and thank you for them, all their support over the years allowing me to do this. So.
Who else is backing you up tonight?
And there's a few guys from Fire Station Six here. So I thank, I thank my guys. The other thing, on behalf of the Fire Department, we put together a small presentation on the Troy volunteer firemen's that if you don't mind, I'd like to show. It's about five minutes long here.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. Just a short video to begin with here, just showing some of the duties and jobs we have completed over the last year. It's hard to tell in that picture, but it was minus fourteen outside. It's a little chilly. Well hopefully that gives you just a little better idea of what we're doing day and night for the city of Troy out there. We've got a couple slides that I just want to go through real quick. There we go. First one just kind of represents, you know, what we do. Everybody thinks of the Fire Department, but we do a little more than the fires. We also do extrications, rescues, a lot of carbon monoxide investigations, and then assist the citizens in whatever needs they may have. A perfect example was just tonight, a garage door collapsed on a gentleman in our city, and a fire station went out and got the individual out and got him treated and transported. So we really never know what we're going to run into on a daily basis. Last year and over the last couple of years, we've been averaging about a thousand calls a year for service, and on average, we get about twelve firefighters per call out of our stations. Next, a little bit on our training. In 2009, we did over eighteen thousand hours of training, all our members in our department. Each firefighter averaged about a hundred and eighteen hours apiece. So quite a bit of time invested in this department. We only require a minimum of sixty hours of training a year, and that's the state minimum for them to maintain their certification. But as you can see, our members put in a lot more effort than that to maintain their credentials and training. And because they do this, it directly affects the safety of our firefighters. And we can knock on wood, but our people are very safe, and it really shows due to their dedication. Some of their other responsibilities, besides doing training and responding to fires, are equipment station and maintenance. These are certain things that we don't really require of them, but all the station members do it. And on average, they're putting in over a hundred hours a year of their own time, that they're not technically getting training credit for or other recorded hours. We expect this also to increase over the next year, just due to the fact that Station Eight, with the paid staff, you know, positions aren't being replaced and projected layoffs, we're just assuming that's going to increase as well. Our officer trainings, you can see, we require our officers to go to additional training above and beyond just the firefighter level. And with that, they're averaging an additional thirty-six hours a year to maintain their officer certifications. We're also part of the Oakland County Hazardous Material Response Team. This was developed a couple of years ago, and it was a consolidation of response teams, thus making it very cost-effective for the communities. But you can see, our average team members are putting in almost sixty hours a year, additional time above and beyond what we've already seen. Another current responsibility that's developed is the MABUS, or the New Regional Mutual Aid System. This is all the Oakland County Fire Departments getting together so that we now can assist each other. We're expecting to see a large increase in call volume for our volunteers based on this. If any of you saw the Oak Park Fire a couple of weeks ago on the news, we had several personnel and trucks down there. And this is just the beginning of this MABUS organization. The last responsibility we wanted to point out too, was the mentoring of new members. When we bring on new members in this Fire Department, it's very crucial that we mentor them and get them trained in the proper procedures. And this is above and beyond everything we've discussed. And when we assign somebody this, it's an additional thirty, forty hours a year at least on top of it. And this year alone, I think we have twenty-five new members of the department. So you multiply that out, it adds up to quite a few hours for our people. A little bit on our current membership. Our average age is forty-one. The average years of service we have is about eleven and a half years. And we just wanted to point out that ten years of experience is really the beginning of a good firefighter. It just takes that long to get up to speed on the proper techniques and training within the department. And that consists of the firefighting knowledge, the skills, abilities, and then the leadership potential to make them into potential officers for the fire stations. Some of the hazards faced by the members, I think the short term is pretty prevalent when we watch the news at night, you know, injuries, disabilities, and death. It's a risky job that we're out there volunteering doing. But then there's also, recently, have been a lot of studies done on the long-term effects to firefighters. And it's quite significant that they've found that depending on the type of cancer, the rates for firefighters are thirty to a hundred percent higher, just because of the toxic fumes and smoke we have to deal with. And then just a little comparison, the Troy Fire Department compared to cities around us, Farmington Hills, Southfield, and Sterling Heights, you can see the numbers. The big thing we wanted to point out was that the volunteer firefighters save the city taxpayers anywhere from three and a half million to thirteen and a half million dollars a year, based on the budgetary numbers. So in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you very much for the award today. I love being a part of this Fire Department, and we really appreciate the support we get from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We definitely appreciate our volunteer firefighters, and it's significant for new residents to know that actually our Fire Department, volunteer firefighters were in service before we became a city, before we incorporated into the city. So long time dedication to this community and to the skill that it takes to be a firefighter. Our next item, I'm going to call upon our Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart. She's going to make a presentation on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for a Cause Program.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Once again, it's my honor and privilege that the employees, we raise money, as you know, by addressing casual on Fridays and some other holidays. And we raise one thousand and sixty-two dollars for the American Cancer Society, a nationwide community-based voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And with me tonight is Kelsey Ruder. She is the Community Representative from American Cancer Society, and she would like to say a couple words.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Hi Kelsey. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. As Cindy said, I have the privilege of working here in the Troy community with really some amazing volunteers to plan our signature event, which is the Relay for Life of Troy. Took place a couple of weeks ago, June 5th and 6th during the tornado warning. It is a twenty-four hour event, and we did have to evacuate into the community center, but all was well. We had about a hundred kids from the Troy community having an all-night dance party, so they made it work one way or another. Wanted to let you know how this year's event went. We had over thirty teams with about four hundred participants from the Troy community. They were comprised from churches, schools, businesses, and different corporations, and we were able to come together and raise over eighty-five thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society. So we so are tremendously grateful to the City of Troy for all of your support, not only in casual for a cause donation, but also allowing us to hold our meetings and our event at the Troy Community Center, which is truly phenomenal, and that allows us to put the funds raised at the event towards research for the American Cancer Society. We especially wanted to thank John Hug, Jeffrey Beekler, and Sue Reister. They were instrumental over at the community center with helping our event run smoothly. So thank you all so much for your support. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. And next, we're going to hear from our city assessor, Neil McCary, on the 2010 City of Troy Assessment Role and Board of Review Report. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor, members of council.
You're not going to tell us all four hundred and twenty-eight pages?
Well, I was going to read them all. Initially, I thought, okay, because I heard it was a short meeting time.
Just a Cliff Notes.
I really, I hate to follow all these people. You've had such great news from the firefighters and the casual for a cause, and I'm here with a lot of bad news unfortunately. I'm going to present a little bit of the facts that are summarized in the front pages of the Board of Review Report and the Assessment Role Report. I have highlighted the lowlights basically. For 2010, the Assessment Role has decreased a lot. It's eight hundred and fifty million dollars. That's about fourteen and a half percent. That's on the assessment side of the ledger. The taxable value went down six hundred and sixteen million dollars. That's eleven point two nine percent. I mean, those are staggering numbers. That's why you're having this budget problem that you're having. This is the fourth year in a row that the Assessment Role has dropped. And prior to that, we hadn't had a drop in assessment since nineteen seventy-six, when personal property was taken off of the tax rolls by the state of Michigan. So these numbers are huge. I'm not going to read all of this data, because it's all summarized for you in the report, but I do want to highlight a few things. The Consumer Price Index for this year was point nine nine seven, and what that means to the average taxpayer, other than a transfer of ownership or new construction on your property, every single taxable value in the city will go down slightly this year. Now obviously, we had some go down way more than that, but what this, the point I'm trying to make is that there is no one in the city who won't see some reduction in their taxable value unless they just purchase their home. And then you have that uncapping problem. And also, for the first time this year, another bad point to bring up, oh, I should have brought this up here, I'm sorry. This is the first time in the history of the city of Troy that every class of property has decreased in value. Residential, commercial, industrial, condominium, vacant land, improved property, and all the classes of personal property, every single class of property has decreased in value this year. There's also a chart there that details the total change. And what's interesting too, is when you compare the taxable value to the assessed value, at one point in time, the taxable value was about thirty-nine percent of market value. It's pushing forty-nine percent this year, and it hasn't been that tight since two years after Proposal Eight went in. By next year, it will be the same number. There will not be a single property left in this city that has a difference in their taxable and assessed value. The personal property role also is down this year. It wasn't down as much as I had expected, though. It went down about nine percent. That's really not a lot, considering everything that's happening out there. We had an eleven percent decrease two years ago, fourteen percent a few years before that. So the business sector out there is stabilizing as far as their purchases go. So that's not as big of a drop as we expected, but still, when you add all up, it contributes to that eleven point two nine percent drop in value. So there's a chart that details that for you. The industrial facilities tax role had a slight decrease, about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Really nothing, nothing there on that, because that, that role fluctuates all the time. The exemptions expire, you get new companies in, there's really no way to, to track that. We have a history of that. The other issue that's going to be critical for the DDA and for the city, it does have actually a positive effect on the city. The DDA role is down five hundred and seventy million dollars. That's a twelve and a half percent decrease, and so the taxable value dropped, or the captured taxable value dropped over thirty-six percent. While that's bad news for the DDA, it did give the city itself some net taxable value, because whenever the captured value goes down in the DDA, the city gains some taxable value. But this is going to make it extremely difficult for the DDA to fund their debt service in the few years that are coming up here. We don't see this trend reversing anytime soon. There's a chart here also that, that gives you the complete history of the DDA since its inception. We're down to one brownfield authority, the Midtown Square Project at Maple and Coolidge. That's all been paid off. Earlier this year, you released the funds, some of those funds have ran out, to help the city and the school districts. They got quite a chunk of change out of that money. So we just have the TCF Bank here. That is down slightly, but really, there's not much we can do there. Bank buildings are bank buildings, and it's only building on that property. It's not like Midtown Square, where you have two hundred and fifty condominiums there that you can deal with. This is the seventh year for the Smart Zone in the City of Troy. One more chart. The Smart Zone's over at the old Big Beaver Airport. That's an industrial development there. It is also down. Their capture is down about eleven percent. And again, when their capture goes down, the city does gain some net taxable value from that issue. For all residential classes of property, that would be condominiums and houses, we have about twenty-seven thousand parcels out there. The average assessed value for those is a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. The average taxable value for that year for 2010 is a hundred and two thousand, four ninety. This is where I apologize. During all the milage stuff, we were saying a hundred and three thousand, I missed it by three tenths of a percent. I'm very sorry about that. Try not to let that happen again. We have actually more sales this year. We had about four hundred and thirty-eight sales, so the sales were up about a hundred and twenty sales in residential properties. They had a lot to do with the federal program, where they could get the eight thousand dollar first-time buyer's credit. That made a difference in the number of sales. Obviously, the value was down considerably. Condominiums sales dropped. We had a hundred last year, and this year there was seventy-four, so we lost twenty-six in volume there. We also had about two hundred, or twenty-three hundred deeds that we process every year in the assessing department. Almost every one of those comes with a property transfer affidavit, so you can double that number. And pretty much, we do the same number of principal residence exemptions, so there's about seven thousand documents that we have to handle in any given year. We have nineteen hundred and sixty-six commercial and industrial properties in the City of Troy. That encompasses about sixty-one hundred businesses. That number fluctuates back and forth. Last year was about fifty-eight hundred, a couple of years before that, it was sixty-five hundred. There's a lot of companies that move in and out during the course of any one year. They all file personal property returns. Those returns go out the first of January, and they're due back the twentieth of February. So it's basically a six-week swing where we have to process all sixty-one hundred of those. I have to mention the Board of Review. It's really hard to get people to serve on the Board of Review. It's a very, very difficult job, and these people are under a huge amount of pressure, and they just did a great job this year. I mean, you can't believe what people will say to you when you're in that room, and these folks were calm, cool, collected, they handled it very well. The other thing that you should know, and these are, I think, basically the first seven pages of that report. Right after that, we have these, I put all this information into an Excel sheet for you, and it's just the numbers themselves. There's no explanation or anything like that. And it covers everything we've talked about. It has the milage rates on it, and additionally, the very last page of it lists the top twenty taxpayers in the City of Troy for the current year. We have that information available in our office all the time. We have it by school district, we have it by the DDA, by whoever you want it to be. But it's a nice handy reference guide, especially for people in your position, where someone may have a question for you. Most of that information will be included in these sheets. And other than that, I can answer any questions you might have on this.
Questions for Mr. McCary at this point?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
And this is available to the public.
Yes, I forgot to mention that. It's on our website. There's a link, or you can go just right to the assessing page, and that, that report is there. And also, last year's report was out there. It's something we're trying to do, just to get the information out to the public. But yeah, the hundred, the whole four hundred and twenty-eight pages is out there, but you obviously don't need to read all of that.
Other questions for Mr. McCary?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you. There are no carryover items, so we'll go right to public hearings. And our first public hearing is a special use request. Proposed Big Beaver Cavern outdoor seating on the north side of Big Beaver, west of Rochester Road, six forty-five East Big Beaver, section twenty-two, currently zoned OM Office Mid Drive. Presenting for staff, we're going to have Brent Pevenant. Getting the thing up.
I apologize for the technical glitch.
That's all right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council members. The applicant, Merrick O. Incorporated, submitted a special use approval application for an outdoor seating area on Big Beaver. And the seating area is to be constructed between the restaurant, which is shown in blue, and the attached office building. There's a green space between the two buildings, and it's basically, nothing's going on there now, and it's to be constructed within that area. now, and it's to be constructed within that area. And the seating area will be surrounded by landscaping, fencing. They'll have direct access to the, to the main restaurant, and it will, it will seat approximately 20 people. And the patio, the size of the patio is 14 feet by 42 feet, or approximately 588 square feet in area. The property is currently zoned OM Office Midrise District, and restaurants are permitted by special condition, provided that they're actually structurally attached to the office building. There's also standalone restaurants are permitted by special use, but this, this, this restaurant was in existence since 1984, and prior to the, prior to standalone restaurants being permitted at NOM. And outdoor seating areas are permitted as a special use, provided, subject to approval by city council. Planning Commission did consider this item and recommended approval of the outdoor seating area. The application meets all the, the area requirements of the OM Office Midrise District, including open space, parking, and design requirements for the outdoor seating area. The project enhances an already successful restaurant in the city, and the development of the outdoor seating area increases activity, activity on Big Beaver. It complements the vision established by the Big Beaver corridor study, and it's consistent with our master plan. Therefore, city management recommends approval of the outdoor seating area. I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for council before we open the public hearing? Thank you. Public hearing is declared open. Is there anyone that is here to speak on this item that wishes to speak? Good evening.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. My name is Chris Sisery. I'm a representative of Dorchen Martin Associates. I prepared the drawings that are before you today with the help of Sam Dorchen, who unfortunately would have liked to have been here, but had cataract surgery today. But I'm here today with Mark Looney's son, Michael, who are the owners of Big Beaver Tavern. And at this time, we don't have anything to add to the findings, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sisery this evening? No, we received all the data in our packet. Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, close the public hearing and return it to council for deliberation and a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby grants special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Big Beaver Tavern outdoor seating located on the north side of Big Beaver, west of Rochester, 645 East Big Beaver, Section 22, within the OM zoning district.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilman Howarak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I just wanted to point out that we had also received some correspondence from nearby businesses as well.
The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. And our second public hearing is a rezoning application for Troy's, Troy Sports Center Properties at the northwest corner of John R. Big Beaver in Section 23, O1 Low Rise Office District to B2, which is Community Business District. And before we open the public hearing, Mr. Sabatet will present for staff.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The subject parcel is approximately 2.27 acres in area. It's zoned O1 Low Rise Office. There's a Chase Bank and a vacant office building on the western portion of the property. And on eastern portion of the, of the parcel is, is a parking area. The, what the applicant proposes to do is increase marketability for the vacant office space attached to the Chase Bank, and by, by rezoning the parcel to B2 Community Business, he would expand the range of uses permitted on the property. And I would note that banks are also permitted in B2, so it's not going to be shooting himself in the foot, so to speak, by, by rezoning from O1 to B2. The master plan designates this area as being within the Big Beaver Road classification of the master plan, calls for mixed, mixed use along the corridor, mixing of commercial, office, residential, retail. And this, this, by, by rezoning to B2, it actually does expand the range of uses, and therefore, it's consistent with the master plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item and recommended approval of the rezoning. There's one thing I should note. The, the required front yard setback in O1 presently is 30 feet. The existing building is located 60 feet from Big Beaver, so it meets, it complies with the setback requirement. The setback requirement for B2 is 75 feet, so it'll technically be, be closer than permitted on the zoning district. So, what this rezoning would have the effect of doing is creating a nonconforming building on the property. The owner is aware of this issue, supports, still supports the rezoning, has no problem with it. The plant, the council can create nonconformities as, as a result of rezonings. And provided he has no intention of demolishing the building and rebuilding in the exact spot, which he doesn't, it's not an issue. I just wanted to point that out. It was also pointed out to Planning Commission prior to their support of the rezoning application. The proposed B2 rezoning is consistent with the master plan, is compatible with surrounding uses and surrounding zoning districts, and city management recommends approval of the rezoning application.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I have one.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Mr. Sabatet, I will be supporting this request. However, I have to say I'm somewhat frustrated. Attended a conference this week, and members of council have been copied with some of the material, but I attended two sessions, and one is, is your community ready for form-based code? If we had currently form-based code along Big Beaver, this zoning request would be not necessary. In fact, the setback language wouldn't be necessary. It could be a bill to or a bill to zone. And so, although I know when I sat on, okay, you know where I'm going on this.
I do.
I mean, there's a sense of urgency here. And I, I would look forward to hearing from planning soon on this issue, because form-based code would give the flexibility. One thing that was stressed at this conference was, not only is time money for developers and investors, but it's time share, it's also market sharing. And so, I think it's important, and I, I believe it's the belief of this council, that we be as flexible as we can, so that we can bring much-needed prosperity and economic boost, not only along Big Beaver, but throughout the city. So, you're nodding.
I, I agree with everything you just said, Councilmember Kerwin.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Then we'll open the public hearing. I note that Mr. Bostic is here. Did you wish to speak on this, Dennis Bostic?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. I really don't have anything to add to it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody has any.
Council, do you have questions? So, I think the information was pretty well delineated in the information that we received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being available. Anyone else? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Whereas the city is in receipt of a rezoning request from O1 to B2, file number Z-737, as demonstrated by the ordinance, to amend Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy, and as illustrated in the attached sketch of parcels to be rezoned. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the proposed rezoning from O1 to B2, and be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby amends the zoning district map.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Mayor Portem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes. Motion passes. Good luck. Good luck.
We appreciate your flexibility.
You're welcome.
Really helped.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Next, we move to public comment, and I remind members of the audience that the public comment section is intended for five minutes per person on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. And so, I will call on those that have signed up. And we have James Savage first. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I guess it's a question that I asked some time ago, and also, I recall one member of council requested this, and as regarding the money, and over the last year, most of the meetings have been involved in the budget, and how we can save money, where the money's going, and particularly recently over the, the building department, their finances were went over with a fine tooth comb. However, the question is, and it might have been in some of the budget hearings, but I really don't have any accounting expertise, so I might, I might have missed it. And that is the amount of money the city is paying, or has paid, to, to the consultants. And the question was some time ago, in the year 2009, what was the amount of, that the city paid to, what was it, Carlisle Wardman in the year 2009? And what I would like to hear, because I'm not an accountant, is just a figure of what totally they were paid in 2009. Actually, I would like to hear what, what we paid to consultants as a whole in the year 2009, and also, if we are still paying lobbyists, and what the, what the dollars amounts are or were, and basically, what we got for the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. I note on my screen that Audrey Zabrowski signed up for H5. Do you wish to speak on that? Good evening.
Sorry, I got a hard time walking. On H5, it's, is this dissolving the Historic District Commission also, the study group? Is that what it's doing, is taking it away?
Turning to it here. Pardon? Yes, that's just a study part of it. The temporary, the study part.
The Historic, the Historic District Commission is not being dissolved?
No.
Okay, I was afraid of that, because I just remembered Mrs. Bush one time going through the White House and then talking to the people on television, saying that there's one thing that we should never do away with, is our Historic District Commissions, because they are the people that go out and keep the homes and keep the buildings. And if we don't keep our farms, and don't keep our buildings, and don't keep our, some of our old homes, our future children will not know what this country is made up of. And that is our future. And they will know nothing of it, with all the farms and everything being torn down. They'll have to go to a museum to see what was there, and a lot of that is now pre-made. And I would just hate to see these things being dissolved.
Okay. You also signed up for I-9.
Yeah, I have a...
And remember now, we do it all at the beginning, so that's why I'm reminding you.
I have a question on that. How much money is actually given to the Boys and Girls Club per year?
This, this is the amount, and actually, it has been cut in half from other years.
It was how much?
This amount that's in here now is the total amount, and it's been cut in half from the previous years. And the school district had given some money over the years. I don't know what their situation is either.
Yeah, because I see a lot, you know, there's dinners, there's Taste of Troy, and I have tried to get people to sign up for the Taste of Troy that has restaurants. I may not have attended in that, but that's a different reason. But I have tried to get people to go there, sign up, and Atkins Pies have been in every year, and that was my doing, is getting them there. And because I happen to know the relative who owns the place, and I said, it's one of the best things to do. Well, I feel like if we're, if we're getting money for the Taste of Troy for the Boys and Girls Club, and we're getting, there's banks that have, a lot of stores that have jars in it for says Boys and Girls Club and everything like that, I just feel like maybe we could come back, because I'm understanding that the Boys and Girls Club of Troy is not made up of just Troy people. It's made up of a lot of other cities. And what are their cities doing for this? No one ever tells anybody. I would like to know, how much does, I heard Sterling Heights is part of it. What do they give to the Boys and Girls Club? Anything? I have, I have relatives that live in Sterling Heights. They never heard of them. They're giving anything.
Well, you could inquire of the Boys and Girls Club of their finances. We're just telling, talking about this portion tonight.
Yeah, well, I just, would just like everybody to think about that. If we have to cut back, we cut back, because we do have a community center, because I donated a bumper pool table, and it's one of the best tables that they have at the community center. So, I know, you know, and they wanted me to give it to the Boys and Girls Club, and I said, no. I said, because they have enough old things over there. And so, I said, the community center can have it, but not, not the Boys and Girls Club. Let them go over to the community center. That's what we have one for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that I missed? Public comment? Okay, then we'll go to regular agenda items. And our first item is nominations for boards and committees. And we do have, on here, the Board of Zoning Appeals, four nominations. If anyone has any names to bring forward?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
We'd like to nominate Kenneth Courtney for reappointment. And I'd like to nominate...
For the, the term expiring 4/30/2010?
Not the unexpired term, right?
The unexpired term is where Mr. Kovacs is going on. Okay, thank you. Any others?
I'd like to nominate William Fisher, term expiring '06/2012.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate A. Allen Neal, term expiring '06/2012.
Any others? Mayor Portem Fleming?
I would nominate Edward Kempin, who's Sir Congressman, requests a reappointment, term expires 4/30/10.
Okay. And Councilwoman Beltrameini?
I, I'd like the clerk to clarify the terms, because the terms are shown as expiring...
Right.
Like, two months ago, for which we're nominating. So, if she would clarify what these three openings, what the terms are, please.
Madam Bartholomew?
Mayor, council, the, the terms would be for the one that is currently showing as 4/30/2010, it should be 4/30/2013 on both of those. The one that's showing 4/30/2011 is correct.
Okay. So, we'll correct that to be, those nominations were for the 4/30/2013. Okay. Was there one name that was suggested for the unexpired term? Was that Mr. Neal or Mr. Fisher? There, there were three openings, or three positions, let's put it that way, and some have requested reappointment, and some are requesting being placed up. Councilman Slater?
I believe I nominated Kenneth Courtney for the reappointment to 2013, and Mr. Fisher and Mr. Neal for expiring '06/2012.
And then it would come up again for reappointment? The unexpired term?
The unexpired term.
Okay. And Mr. Kempin for the 4/30/13?
The date, the date of '06, excuse me?
Pardon?
The date of '06/2012 is the date that he applied.
Right.
So, that's, the date we either need is the 2013 or the 2011.
Right. Okay. So, we need a person to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Kovacs, who is resigning, correct?
Correct. So, the three lines with no names on them are the dates that we need filled, so that we do the 4/30... we do the 4/30/2013.
Right.
4/30/2013, and then 4/30/2011.
Right.
The other dates are applied.
Okay. So Mr. Fisher for 2013? Is that what you're asking?
Correct.
And then Mr. Neal for 2011?
Correct.
Okay. All right, now these, do we have a motion? For those names? And then we'll have the, place them in nomination, and then we'll have the vote on the next meeting.
Madam Mayor, I would support all four of those names.
You're moving the resolution, then?
With all four names.
With all four names, right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we forward the four nominating names to the next regular meeting for action. Do I need to repeat the names and the dates again here?
You can't, we have them.
Yes, okay.
Have to repeat them for you if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Howard?
Just a protocol. For the two new individuals, if Mr. Councilman Slater, if you wouldn't mind making sure that they are available before the next council meeting, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Neal's here this evening.
And we can call.
We can call, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
Have an opportunity to meet them. Okay. All right, the vote, then, thank you. Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is H3, it's an approval of amendment to the MDOT contract, offer Stevenson Highway, 14 mile to I-75. Do we have a resolution? Councilwoman Kerwin?
We saw that Troy City Council hereby approves Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT contract number 10-4040, which amends MDOT contract 07-7734, both contracts being between the City of Troy and the Michigan Department of Transportation, for the purpose of waiving the interest payments from October 1st, 2009, until the project is converted by MDOT to regular federal aid in fiscal year 2010, for the reconstruction of Stevenson Highway from 14 mile to I-75, project number 02.201.5. And be it further resolved, the Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents, a copy which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by, was that Councilman Slater?
Yes.
That we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for either the clerk or the city attorney, I don't know who. This is dependent upon federal funding, and the memo said until it was converted to federal aid and ended there. The resolution says in 2010. There is thought that there won't be a new authorization bill for another 15 to 18 months. We could be beyond the 2010 budget year, before this is ever converted. Will the wording of this resolution cause us to make another resolution if that happens?
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, there is a 2010 reference in here, but that is the MDOT contract number, and MDOT will need to do another, they will need to approve this before it can come back before you for another extension, if in fact the federal funds are not available.
Well, the resolution reads, if I may, Mayor?
Uh huh, yes.
Until the project is converted by MDOT to regular federal aid in fiscal year 2010. That's the reference in this resolution to which I'm referring. If we just struck in fiscal year 2010, then this would be good until it was finally converted to a federal aid number.
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I'm looking at the booklet, and I think that there may be a different resolution that's actually in the, yeah, in the letter here, the resolution.
I'm reading from the resolution.
In our packet, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry, I see.
I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Beltrameen.
I would be much more comfortable amending this by striking in fiscal year 2010.
Support.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we strike in fiscal year 2010 out of the resolution. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, then, on the amendment, and then on the motion?
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Amendment passes, and Councilwoman Howard?
Just another question about the resolution. Is this project Stevenson Highway, 14 mile to Rochester, or 14 mile to I-75? It's my understanding that it's 14th to Rochester.
Resolution says I-75. Mr. Zerline, do we have?
Excuse me. I'm going to have Mark Miller identify the project terminus.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I believe that I'm taking in face value the I-75, and hopefully Mr. Randa is coming to answer that specifically.
Okay, let me see here.
Mayor?
Yes.
The contract does say 14 mile road to Highway I-75. It's in the witness, it's in the first full paragraph.
Right. And Councilwoman Howard, I could just ask you for a clarification, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
And that would be on page 79 in our.
Right. Yeah, the contract does say to Highway I-75, including pavement removal, earth excavation, subbase, aggregate base, concrete base, concrete curb and gutter, storm sewer, and drainage improvement work, and altogether with necessary related work.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have the head knot, I have the head knot from the bench, Timbridge neck, says it is to I-75.
I-75, okay. Councilwoman Howard, does that answer your concern?
It is. It's just one of the peculiarities of the roads, you know, where Rochester meets Stevenson. And anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. All right, then the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew on the main motion?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion, motion passed. H4 is the 2009-10 budget amendment number two? Someone want to move the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
We saw that Troy City Council hereby approves the 2009-10 budget amendment number two, a submitted copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. H5 is the dissolution, dissolution of Historic District Study Committee.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would ask my colleagues to consider my request, to take no action on this item. We have heard from a resident tonight who had some questions about it, and I would prefer to look at it in the gestalt of all of our committees and board, which were coming up to a study session, and also in context of Chapter 13. My understanding is we're under ordinance review right now. I'm hoping that Chapter 13, management will look at carefully, and ascertain whether that should be included in the whole, and ordinance review come before us as soon as possible.
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I just wanted to address, I know Ms. Zabrowski talked about it, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that there are two different entities. One of them is the Historic District Committee, which we need to keep in existence in order, as long as we have historic district resources. The other is the Study Committee, and that is a committee that was formed for a particular purpose, and generally they're formed just to review one particular request. They have been in existence for a while to review several different successive requests, but now their job is done. And so it is our recommendation that because the objects have been fulfilled, and they have admirably served for actually longer than what was initially anticipated, that this portion, the Historic District Study Committee, be dissolved, and that anytime there is a request in the future, that you certainly have the responsibility to appoint another committee.
Councilwoman Kerwin, does that answer your concern? Because this is just the study part of the committee.
I understand it, and I understand that they chose to look into certain properties. Again, I was supposed to, I would really ask that we just take no action at all at this time. If they're not doing any work, then that's fine, but that we keep it in context of the whole, even in terms of where this would house. Currently, the District Study Committee is connected with the Historical Museum, and falls under the director there, and perhaps the District Study Committees would in fact be moved if they needed to, to plan. So I would ask that we take no action at this time, send it back to management for a thorough look. There's no rush on this. If there's nothing for them to do at this time, there's nothing for them to do, but look at it in the whole and see where it would stand. And that's my request, if that's all right with you.
I have no objection to waiting. Other council members, do you have any comments on this? We are going to look at all the committees. Does it pose a problem to have it still be in existence, Mrs. Bloom?
No, it certainly doesn't, and council, I know, is, the board and committee discussion is coming up, and a very future amendment. I guess I just needed clarification, because we do have Chapter 12, and then we also have Chapter 13. If there's direction for us to look into that, I mean, they are separate entities, and they do separate functions, and we will always need to have a Historic District Study Committee as long as there are historic districts. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood where the direction was, and perhaps you can wait until the next, the next meeting when we discuss the board and committees, before we get into that.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
A question for the city attorney. I just want clarification. I think you misspoke yourself when you said, "We will need a Historic District Study Committee for as long as we have historic districts." We'll need the Historic District Committee.
Correct. HDC, not the Historic District Study Committee. That's an ad hoc committee.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howard?
Do we have, because of the enabling statute regarding Historic District Study Committees, it does only be in existence if it has work to conduct, and it's ad hoc, and therefore I ask, is there any business for this committee to conduct? And if there is not, then why, then where is its justification for existence?
Mrs. Bloom?
They have completed all of the work that is pending, and they have a recommendation to you. So at this point in time, there is no business to come before you, and that's the first time that that's happened for several years. It's a little longer than what they thought they were going to be serving, I think.
And furthermore, if all of the members resigned, it's my understanding that the committee itself would cease to exist. Is that correct? Since it's ad hoc?
It is ad hoc. There are, there have been some members who've been meeting, there's been a quorum. Obviously, there's a recommendation to you for another item that's on the agenda for tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Again, for directions, since Ms. Bloom asked for it, I would ask Ms. Bloom, really the city manager, to look into Chapter 13 in terms of the ordinance review, and the context of how the Study Committee fits into our current structure, which is reordered. So that's.
We'll be happy to review any ordinances that council would like us to take a look
at.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
This committee has no further work to do. So this committee can be disbanded, and Chapter 13 can still be looked at. As we endeavor to streamline and do only what's necessary, and that's what we said we needed to do, I think we need to follow that plan. This committee has no work. They've been in existence for six and a half years. They're done. You can look at 13, but we don't need to leave this committee in place to do that. So I would disagree that we take no action tonight. I think we can do away with this committee.
Further discussion? We don't have a resolution yet. Mayor Pretem Fleming?
I'll move the resolution. Whereas the Historic District Study Committee, appointed in February 2004, has completed work on all pending requests to delist properties. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby dissolves the Historic District Study Committee in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 13 of the Troy City Code and MCL 399.241.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pretem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Further discussion? I think in this instance, because of the particular things with the Study Committee, and they do have no work, I don't think it would hurt to dissolve them at this time. I do agree that we need to look at Chapter 13, all of our, you know, ordinances about what we need to do, and we're going to have that big discussion on the 28th, so. Further discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. H6 is a proposed Troy City ordinance amendment to Chapter 3 Administrative Service. We have a resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
We saw that the Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance to amend Chapter 3 Administrative Service of the Troy City Code, Section 1.141, Sections 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, as recommended by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. H3 is proposed Troy City Code and Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 13 Historic Preservation for the elimination of, on the houses, I believe this was set the request to the owners. Councilwoman Kerwin?
H7, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance to amend Chapter 13 Historic Preservation, Section 3, to eliminate 4800 Beach Road as an historic district, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting and recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds as required by state statute.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Mayor Pretem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
This isn't the first time that there has been a request from those homes listed in Chapter 13, who were put under the historic preservation, yet through the homeowner's money, it's been discerned that they should never have been put on there in the first place. place, and I have serious concerns about the other listings there. And that's why, in fact, even though the Historic District Study Committee sees its work as done, I would task management to please find out about all those parcels listed there. Thank you.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltramee?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. and Mrs. Michaels, we've passed, we've passed the resolution. Yes. Thank you, I was just letting you know with all the discussion. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anyone that wants to have an item removed from the agenda?
I-7.
I-7? Any others?
I-9.
I-9? Any others? Could we have a resolution? Council, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Resolve that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of items I-7 and I-9, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as presented.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution with the approval of all items except for I-7 and I-9, that will be considered after the, this motion. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-7, Councilwoman Beltramee?
Madam Mayor, I, I have no problem with this to speak of, however, in the memorandum, there is a place for the city attorney's initials and signature as to form and legality, and when we're signing contracts, that is one line I really would like to see filled out when these things come to us, and it was not, so I'd like to ask first if that was done, and if so, why wasn't the line filled out?
Mrs. Bloom?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I did review this contract, in fact, our office had extensive involvement in redrafting it, so we have reviewed it, we do approve it, and I thank Councilwoman Beltramee for bringing it up and putting, placing it on the record that we have reviewed it. Thank you.
Any other? You wanna move that resolution now?
Yes. Whereas the Troy Police Department Special Investigations Unit, SIU, has become a cooperative initiative comprised of officers from Troy, Bloomfield Township, and Auburn Hills, and whereas an interlocal agreement will outline the purpose, responsibilities, and liability of each of the participating agencies, therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the attached interlocal agreement for participation in the Troy Police Department Special Investigations Unit, and be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby authorizes the chief of police to execute the interlocal agreement on behalf of the city of Troy, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramee, seconded by Councilwoman Howard, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Our own Troy Special Investigative Unit has been recognized many times for the fine work that they've done. They're an extraordinary, extraordinarily talented team, and they have saved lives and kept track of criminal activity that otherwise we would not know. And it was with much dismay that I, that our current budget could not keep everyone going in that, in that same way, so I'm very pleased to see the regional cooperation, the collaboration among different municipalities, so that the good work of the SIU can continue. So my hat's off to the Troy Police Department for finding ways to continue to make things excel. I appreciate the professionalism and the adaptive approach.
Well said, thank you. Very much. Do we have a vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-9, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes, simply wanted to declare at this time that I am the Development and Special Events Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Troy. All the funding from the city goes to support the services of a licensed counselor, I do not receive a single penny that goes through here. The Boys and Girls Club, along with Troy Youth Assistance, Troy Community Coalition, Avondale Youth Assistance have received some funding for a while from the city of Troy. Some has been now cut in half, some over time has been cut significantly, so this will in fact pay for counselor for much-needed vulnerable students for the summer.
Do you feel it's necessary for you to be?
It's up to my colleagues whether I should abstain completely or hold.
Okay. Mrs. Bartholomew, uh, Mrs. Bloom, what is your recommendation?
The charter requires abstention only when there is a financial interest, and so I leave that to the board's discretion as to whether or not they think there's a financial interest. I do thank Councilwoman Kerwin for making the disclosure.
Mayor?
Councilman Howard?
Just to clarify the record for everybody, could, did you say you do not receive any money from the Boys and Girls Club?
No, I said I'm Development and Special Events Director, and I am paid by the Boys and Girls Club. Every penny of this goes to the counselor. Not one penny goes to me.
This particular item?
So you are compensated?
I am.
Oh, okay. And, well, I would say that if, unless they have a firewall with segregated funds and separate accounts, then, then it would probably be in our best interest to have Councilwoman Kerwin abstain.
Is that the will of the body then?
Do they have it separated? Councilwoman Kerwin? Okay.
That's fine.
Maybe just to be, you know, clear, and we'll have Councilwoman Kerwin, excuse yourself while we have this vote. And then we'll, okay.
We should have a motion from council and a vote on that abstention.
Oh, does she have to be back in for the vote and then?
Yes, she would vote on that.
Councilwoman Kerwin? Do we have a vote on? Have to be in while we have a vote to excuse you for the vote, and then you have to leave, so. All right, could we have a resolution to excuse Councilwoman Kerwin for voting on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
In light of the fact that Ms. Kerwin is paid for her services by the Boys and Girls Club of Troy, so that there be no question if any of this money goes to her, I would excuse her from this vote and ask my colleagues to agree.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramee, seconded by Councilwoman Howard, that we excuse Councilwoman Mary Kerwin from this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Harlock?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, Councilwoman Kerwin, now we're gonna have the motion, so now you can leave. And Councilwoman Beltramee, you wanna move the resolution?
Sure.
I already got, wrote your name down here.
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves the funding agreement between the city of Troy and Boys and Girls Club of Troy from July one, two thousand ten, through June thirtieth, two thousand eleven, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the document, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramee, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Approval of this resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramee?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
Motion passes. This is, Councilwoman Kerwin to come back in.
We're done.
Thank you. Okay. Could I request that we take a break before we go to the next item, please? All right, I'll take a ten minute break and be back here today. Thank you.